Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us on this Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. This is a Prescott City Council workshop. Introductions?
Yeah, Mayor, just I see in our audience we got Sandy Griffiths, Yavapai County Contractors Association. She's here representing. And Kendall Jasper's from the PDP. So it's always good to see those guys come out.
Okay. Thanks for being here. We're honored again to have Reverend Kimball Arnold of St. Luke's Episcopal Church leading us in the invocation, and Councilman Lamerson will lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. We pray for all who serve this great city, for those elected by the people to represent the people, for the employees, for the first responders, and the valuable services that each provide, the city of Prescott and its citizens. We pray for those who serve to make decisions for the benefit of all, and for those whose role it is to provide information and guidance for the members of the city council. May they work together in making the challenging decisions facing them on behalf of the city. We offer prayers for those newly elected who take office later this month to represent the citizens. May all in our community work together for the benefit of everyone. We offer thanks for the generations of brave men and women who secured our liberty and continue to do so. Amen.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Any announcements, Craig? Nothing? Okay. We have four proclamations, I believe, today, so let's Chris.
Mayor.
Oh, roll call, please.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protime Kukio.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Good. And Councilman Kukio made the assignments today on the proclamation, so why don't you take over?
Charlie? Go ahead. This is a blood or patient blood management awareness week.
Just missed the shoes.
Dale, thanks for being here.
Patient blood management awareness week, November 2nd through the 6th, 2015. Whereas the city of Prescott is pleased to join Yavapai Regional Medical Center located in our city as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 2nd through the 6th, 2005. And whereas Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management. And whereas patient blood management is an appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives, and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for a blood transfusion. And whereas Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of each person to have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care. And whereas Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes and educating the medical community about best practices and blood management. And whereas we commend the members of Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves and service to others according to their commitment of improving patient outcomes. Now therefore, Marlon D. Kirkendall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, and on behalf of the citizens of Prescott hereby proclaim November 2nd through 6th, 2015, Patient Blood Management Awareness Week in our city. Dale, would you like to share any comments?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor Kirkendall, and council. I'm a poor stand-in for Dr. Peter Tibby, but he literally half an hour ago got called away to surgery, so he was going to be here. My name's Dale Black. I coordinate the program, but Dr. Tibby is the medical director of the program. I talked to him a while ago, and I asked him how many hearts he's done here at Yavapai Regional Medical Center in line with patient blood management principles. He told me over 1,300 hearts, open heart, in line with this very fine safety program. So we're happy to see, too, that in the last three years, the program has now expanded into orthopedics, to neurosurgery, general surgery, intensive care of all sorts. So we're very proud, if I may say so, and happy to bring better patient outcomes to Prescott and western Yavapai County. So thank you.
Thank you, Dale. (applause)
And Mayor, when they're done, Councilman Blair will be proclaiming November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day.
There's there was a camera there, so don't expect them to move too fast.
Just put them on deck. Put them on deck.
Good afternoon, Mr. Blair.
Come on up. I always I always wonder who from staff puts all this dialogue together on these things. Got to be a full-time job somewhere. Today is proclamation for World Pancreatic Cancer Day, November 13, 2015. Whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,960 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 40,560 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, it is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digit at just 7%. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in the late stages, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 830 deaths will occur in Arizona in 2015. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer related to deaths in men and women across the world. And whereas there will be an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Prescott are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early diagnosis and detection, and causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Marlon D. Kirkendall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 13, 2015, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day.
My name is Jane Morrell, and I just want to thank the council and the citizens on behalf of all of those who have lost their battle, or are perhaps going through the battle, or may have that road ahead to walk someday, pancreatic cancer. And I appreciate all that factual information of sharing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause)
And I'm going to read a proclamation for American Diabetes Month. You guys want to come down? It's a long walk, huh? The proclamation is for American Diabetes Month, November 2, 2015. Whereas in the United States, nearly 30 million people, including 692,311 in Arizona alone, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas recent estimates project that as many as 1 in 3 American adults will have diabetes by 2050 if current trends continue. Whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic, let it therefore be resolved that Marlon Kirkendall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim November 2015 to be American Diabetes Month in Prescott, and encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and be a part of American Diabetes Association's Stop Diabetes Movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. You want to introduce yourself and maybe say a few words?
Hi, my name is Drake Hawk, and I had diabetes for around three years now, and it is a disease that has many complications, but it is very easy to manage. And I would just like to thank the council and the mayor for the walk. Thank you.
(applause)
You can cut Kukio out later. Photoshop.
Thanks.
And now Councilwoman Wilcox will be talking about Tax Credit Month.
All right. This is something non-medical here. This is financial. Is there someone here to, ah, please come up? This is a proclamation declaring Tax Credit Giving Month. And with me I have Christine Fouse. Ah, okay, right, of course. How did I not know that? Yes, right. Big brothers and big sisters, right. Which benefits greatly from tax credits. Whereas the state of Arizona Tax Credit Program enables taxpayers to contribute $200 for a single taxpayer and $400 for taxpayers filing a joint tax return, and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit on their Arizona tax bill. And whereas the full amount can be given to a qualified charitable organization of their choice and a school of their choice, the taxpayers can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work they hold dear. And whereas taxpayers are urged to adopt the option to allow employees to contribute to a qualifying charitable organization and state withholding, thereby not reducing take-home pay. And whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization and a school, taxpayers are in effect given the opportunity to choose how to use a portion of their tax dollars. And whereas taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona Tax Credit Program. A donation that qualifies for a state tax credit is also fully deductible on a federal tax return, reducing the federal tax liability. Whereas the Arizona Tax Credit Program is a way of keeping our money in the community, keeping tax dollars local through the charitable giving tax credit builds a stronger and better community at no cost to the donors. Now therefore, I, Marlon D. Kirkendall, Mayor of Prescott, Arizona, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Charitable Tax Credit Giving Month, and for the good of the community, urge residents to keep their money local by making a donation to a qualified local charity and school. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for doing this, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Kirkendall and the city council. I am passionate about this issue because I find we find that only 90%, 10% or fewer of our citizens here take advantage of the opportunity that the legislature has given us to to basically do an interest-free loan to a local nonprofit. There are 30 of them that qualify, and you can give your money now between now and December 31st and receive that back in the form of a tax credit in April. So it's I think there's just a real misperception and lack of understanding about this area, and I'm passionate that Prescott understands it. So I thank you for this opportunity, not only on behalf of Big Brothers Big Sisters, but all the aid charities here in Prescott that could benefit from this.
Good job. (applause)
And Mayor, that's all of them.
That's it?
Yep.
Makedokey. Okay, moving along. We have run presentation. It's that day of the month that we hear from the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. My name is Neil, and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber. We have a number of events coming up here in November, including the Women in Business Luncheon on Tuesday, November 10 at 12:00 p.m. The featured speaker is Councilwoman-elect Billy Orr, who I think is back there, so you can hear her speak by calling our office and registering for the event. The 12th Annual Flying High Turkey Drive is Monday, November 23rd. The Chamber will be collecting donations and turkeys to help restock the Yavapai County Food Bank. We'll be out at the Two Fries locations from 12 to 2, collecting cash and turkeys and any other non-perishable items. The Chamber is promoting Small Business Saturday again to help encourage people to shop local and support locally-owned businesses. If your business is interested in learning more and participating, go to our website, prescott.org. And nominations are being accepted for the Healthy Prescott Business Awards. This is a great opportunity to recognize many of the outstanding area businesses. Go to our website, prescott.org, to find the nomination form. And the Prescott Chamber has added these new businesses. Desert Reflections Realty, Good Samaritan Society Legacy Home Care, Guardian Home Watch of Northern Arizona, Granite Peak Unitarian Universalist Congregation, Moreno's Mob Burger and Ice Cream, Malargo's Art Center, Sidewinder Furniture, the Prescott Station, and finally, Yavapai County Charter School Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Had a good year?
Yes. It's going to be our busy time year with all the events coming up, so.
Very good. Glad to have you. Okay, we'll go to discussion items. Item A.
Item A, Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership Update of Activities.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
Good afternoon, Jeff.
At the October 13th council session, Councilman Blair requested that the Greater GPREP, as we call it, Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership, provide counsel with an updated report of their activities. Mr. Rich Heath, the new executive director who started in June of this year, is here with us today to provide that report, and he is joined by Mr. Dane Beck, who serves as president of the GPREP Board.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Gentlemen, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank council and Mayor for allowing us an opportunity to get in front of you and talk about our organization, and where we're at, and where we're going to go here in the next coming months. So we have a presentation here, and I think Jeff passed it out prior to the meeting, so you all have a have that in front of you. So just some background information. Most of you have been around since the GPREP was started, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but this is a public-private partnership. It is a 501(c)(6) organization. It includes Prescott, town of Prescott Valley, town of Chino Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, as well as Yavapai County, and a number of private entities. Our mission basically is to attract investment and businesses to our region, as well as hopefully retain the good employers that we already have here. Some of our strategies include marketing nationally and internationally, building collaborations, moving that information from the public to the private sector, trying to make sure that we have a unified voice in how we're marketing the region and how we want to progress well into the future. Position ourselves for economic growth, so we want to be able to compete with other regional organizations, not just in Arizona, but throughout the country. And probably the biggest point down there is we are the single point of contact. If somebody's coming from outside the region and they're looking at Greater Prescott, hopefully they'll contact our office first. We'll kind of do that analysis of what they're looking for, put that information in front of them. If they're looking more specifically at the state of the city of Prescott, I'll contact Jeff and Wendy for more information and try to meet their needs. Here's our executive committee. Here's our governing board, so we have about 22 board members currently from the public and private sector. Obviously, the five units of government have a standing member on the committee or on the board. Here's our membership list as of current, so we have a broad base of support on the private side as well as the public side. Here's our focus areas. About 2002, 2003, the organizational founding members put together an action plan that went out to the community, tried to get some ideas on what will be our 2013-26 action plan for this region and for this organization, and they really settled on four areas. Marketing, recruitment, retention and expansion, research capacity and building, and investor relations. So the research capacity and building is getting all that information into one area for people to access, and we're currently doing that, and I'll talk about that just in a minute. Investor relations, one of the things that we really are striving for, and I've been here five months now, is to make sure that all of our partners are well aware of what's going on with with the organization, and how they can actually be a part of what we're doing. Because communication is absolutely critical in making sure this organization is successful. If GPREP is successful, that means the region's also successful. As part of the organizational structure, one of the committees that we formed way back when was a business action team, and they help guide the marketing efforts of the organization. Once the budget is passed, we have money available and put it set aside for various marketing endeavors and initiatives. So this is the the membership of the business action team, and we meet monthly. Our number-one job is to attract base jobs into this region. So in the action plan that was that was developed and adopted, we focus on manufacturing, which is pretty broad stroke. Could be a variety of different types of manufacturing, aviation, aerospace, and defense and security. Some of the progress to date, we are constantly working on updating our website. That is a single point of entries for most people to access information on a business, a region, a community. We are tracking our hits right now, and I find it kind of interesting because we can track those analytics. Phoenix is the number-one location from where the people are looking at our site. They're they are located there, and they're looking at our site from Phoenix. New York, Amsterdam, Moscow, and Overland Park. I have no idea why those came up, but obviously maybe people are visiting here from Moscow or or Amsterdam, I'm just not sure. But we'll talk a little bit more about how we want to capitalize on on those viewers that are coming to our site. We have a marketing brochure that's in front of you. We also provide technical assistance on five-site searches, request for information that comes through Arizona Commerce Authority. And we're also following up with one of those, and we'll be meeting next week on trying to put a package together that meets their expectations. We are co-sponsors of a lot of events. We want to make sure that that GPREP logo is is embedded in many places we possibly can. We have a really good relationship with Arizona Association for Economic Development, as well as APS, which is Arizona Public Services, and Arizona Commerce Authority. I just got back from Los Angeles. I attended the Cornet Global Summit. Most of the members of the association, the Cornet Association, are realtors that focus on commercial and industrial real estate, as well as a variety of different other members, could be insurance or software providers or so forth. But got to meet a lot of different people there, including our ACA contacts that are in California. Always given presentations to communities and organizations, so going forward, I want to make sure that everybody's empowered to to spread the message about what we're doing here at GPREP and to get involved. We have the BAT meetings every month. Anybody here can attend those meetings, and we just had one last week talking about various things that we want to do to embellish our website. And also, we ran a successful campaign in partnership with Arizona Commerce Authority, and we'll get into a lot of that, but that was January through April of this year. I'll talk a little bit more about where we want to go with the second part of that. So here's some of the impressions, total delivered impressions. So impressions are, if you're looking at a website and you happen to look at, for example, hiking shoes, and you go in there and you start looking at hiking shoes, for example, what happens when you go back on the website? Any website. It seems to follow you, doesn't it? It tracks you where you're going to go. And those are the impressions that that this is kind of simulating for what happened earlier this year in conjunction with Arizona Commerce Authority. So we want to make sure that those individuals that are looking at our site always have that information right there. So what do we tend to do when we see those ongoing informational pieces on the sidebar of our website? We tend to track over there and look at those, right? And that further embeds that search at that point. So here's the impressions by month, the types of impressions that were recorded. The retargeting strategy was the most effective. That means once it happened, we redid it again. That means that there's a embedded code so they can see the see GPREP again once it was actually brought up the first time. So moving ahead, as you have in front of you, we have a brand-new marketing brochure that just came out. That is kind of more the timeless piece that we're going to be using. That's going to go out to strategic locations, have some businesses out in the airpark that would be more than willing to put those out for people to to see. Inside of those, there will be individual marketing pieces that will talk about higher education, workforce development, could be labor force, could be quality of life-type things that we have in this region. It talks about the municipalities. So those will be completed and then inserted and distributed based on the audience that we're in front of. Now what we're learning is a lot of people don't like to take information home, because what happens, they just kind of toss it in the trash can on the way home. So we have purchased these USB flash drives. So all the information, the hard copy information, as well as the videos, will be in here, loaded on here, so they can access that information at any time. The next bullet point down is always making sure our website is is the best it can be. We just had a presentation on Zoom Prospector, which is a program that will give you up-to-date information about your community. It will also have the ability to have all the buildings and develop little sites located on your website, so people can query those out. The thing that I kind of struggle with is where do you get all the information from on labor force, demographics, because you have Department of Administration, you have the Department of Labor? Zoom Prospector has one source that they merge all that information twice a year. That way, when we have a business inquiry, we can pull that information up pretty quick. We can just put it on a matrix and say, we want this piece, this piece, and this piece, and we'll pull it up on a PDF. Actually, Zoom Prospector is something that the Arizona Commerce Authority encourages all the organizations like like GPREP, as well as municipalities, to use, because that's a credible source for information. So when they do a search on XYZ building, they get everything back from soup to nuts. What they like to have is just one format of information, so they don't have to duplicate it continuously, and regurgitate that and try to put it in a format for the for the company that's actually asking for the information. Newsletter, this is November will be our third publication, so if you're not on our news e-news list, please join. You can go on our website and join there. It is just an eclectic list of of articles about what's going on with events, businesses, communities, buildings, and sites. It's just another way to kind of put the information out there and, again, inform the community of what's going on. Arizona Commerce Authority, they have their calendar out. I'm going to be working with them on making sure that I'm I'm attending those business sites, business recruitment trips that are most worthy for us in this region. So they have California and Midwest on their calendar, so hopefully I can participate in those in the in the coming months and early next year. One of the things I like to do is to host a site selector forum early next spring. Site selector consultants have areas that they're expertise in. So it might be in aviation, it might be in plastics, it might be in aeronautics, it might be in mining. But we want to make sure that there are site selectors out there that are interested in the companies that we have here, the industry sectors that we have, that we can bring them in and take them on a two-day trip around the region and let them know what we have here, so we can build that that relationship. And also continue to build the regional brand through APS and ACA. Some of the things coming up, we want to do the digital marketing strategy. We're currently tracking our website as of the first. For the next two months, we will be able to define and quantify who's visiting our sites, our website, and then we're going to do the digital marketing starting in January. So that's kind of an extension of the ACA campaign, not more statewide, but more just specifically on the Greater Prescott region. We're revamping the existing video that Mayor was on, and we're going to repackage that. We're developing two videos as we speak, business-to-business and workforce development. We also have a number of photos that are taken of the region that will be used for print, the website, and digital marketing pieces. And all that I mentioned will be on flash drive. And then strategically putting this material out there. We want to have as many partners as we can distributing this information. We have good relationships with the three chambers of commerce, and that's that's very helpful, because they got a lot of foot traffic in each of their their locations. Co-branding with us, we're going to be Co-branding with us, we're going to be doing some asset mapping in the spring. And one of the things we're looking at right now is hiring a media and marketing associate to help with the website, Facebook page, and all those types of things that get a little cumbersome for me to be able to do on a regular basis. And that's me, and I'm going to let Dane speak for a few minutes and highlight some things. Dane was one of the founding members, so he probably knows more about GPREP than I'll ever know.
So thank you, Council, for your time this afternoon. I wanted to speak a little bit to return on investment. Why is City of Prescott involved in GPREP? And the most basic reason I can tell you that City of Prescott's involved in GPREP is that we, through GPREP, City of Prescott can leverage their dollars against the dollars of Chino Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, Prescott Valley, the contribution from the county, you have contributions from Embry-Riddle, Yavapai College, Yavapai Medical Center. So City of Prescott's able to leverage their dollars against other public and private sector stakeholders in our region to make sure that we market our region effectively so that if there is a good prospect that's going to bring high wage, good benefit jobs to this area, we touch them. I truly believe that we're better together than separate. The collaborative effort allows us to pool our money, pool our marketing resources, and make sure we touch as many people as possible to bring the good jobs here. The ACA campaign was an example of that. We were able to purchase advertising power that we would have never gotten without that, and that campaign was matched 50/50 by APS. So those were dollars that we put up and APS matched. Going forward, APS has said they are in a position to continue those matches. So through our regional effort, we can leverage our dollars to get a greater distribution. The marketing campaign going forward, wider audience. The other reason I would say that City of Prescott should be involved is strategic planning, to make sure that we market this region as effective as possible as a region. And APS is willing to step up again. We did a strategic planning to get GPREP launched. APS is talking about with us about doing a strategic planning initiative this spring to make sure that our focus to market this region is effective, and that would involve a third-party consultant that APS would help us hire. My last point is that we have had success. I know some things are still unconfidentiality, but through the efforts of the City of Prescott staff and City of Prescott Council members and some GPREP board members, we're able to retain a business in this area. That announcement will be coming soon. And what I speak to there is that by having public and private sector working together, the two can, and having a familiarity together, they can quickly come together when there's a need to solve that need and keep either a good business here or bring a new business in. That interaction between the public and private sector is key because private sector can do things public sector can't, and GPREP brings those two groups together so that when we have an issue, we can act quickly, we know each other, and we have the intellectual capital in the GPREP board and within our community partners to make sure that we land or keep good businesses here in Prescott.
Dane, thank you. Any questions or comments to Dane? Yeah, Jim?
Thank you, not for Dane, but I do have a comment with regards to conferring with Mr. McConnell and Mr. Burke and off time and time with Wendy. Seems to be that there's a collaboration between the elected body and the hired administrators for the city. And in no uncertain terms, the city manager that we've chosen to hire, that we've chosen to keep on staff, has indicated this is a tool that he feels is necessary in the toolbox. And having said that, from a regional cooperative standpoint and from a regional economic perspective, I'm not going to object to continuing down the path that Mr. McConnell and his subordinates have chosen to lead us down at this time. So that's where I'm at.
Thanks for those comments, Jim. Anyone else?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And Jim, just following up with your comments, I'm appreciative of the GPREP folks being here today. Obviously, this is an organization that is getting its feet under it, it's growing. The future, I think, will be brighter with its participation as within the region, and I'm supportive of our staff's support of it, and I'm glad that the City of Prescott is participating.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're all waiting for the big win, you know, the big industry to move in, the big success story. And I know it takes a few years. So I wonder, Richard, if you could comment in your experience, how much time do you think it does take to bring in new industry?
You know, everything that I've heard, and just to kind of regress a little bit, I've been doing economic development for, this is my 16th year. I ran an economic development organization in central Wisconsin, and then I went on to Green Bay and I ran a regional planning commission, which was an economic development district, much like NACOC. Every indication or report that I get that, when I talk to my colleagues and I talk to APS or ACA staff, they said this area is just, has just unlimited potential. Now, can you match it all up? Can you draw the attention of those that are seeking a site? And having that, those resources there, whether it's a building or buildable site, trying to match those up is very important. We have some discussions now about the fact that we don't have a lot of buildings available. And so you talk about virtual builds. So those types of things, trying to get all those different pieces. Coming from Wisconsin to Arizona, there aren't a lot of incentives like there were back in Wisconsin. So we have to be very creative. But to get back to your question, I think as the economy's approving, as we collectively, this is an ultimate team game. Bring that information, we can start sorting through it, put the highlights in front of people. We have the airpark, we have a lot of developable land that's online right now in Prescott Valley. Chino Valley's coming online. It could be anytime, just matching up those resources. But I was down at the Cornet Conference, just for a little side note. And all of my colleagues in the greater Phoenix area said, oh my God, you get an opportunity to market Prescott and Prescott Valley because that's such a growing area. So I get kind of goosebumps when I think about the opportunities up here and the challenges they have down there. Now, they're so big that, I mean, it's kind of hard to match the two markets together, but if we can get the resources in place so we can market them effectively, I think we have a lot of opportunities out there, especially with Embry-Riddle, with what's going on at Yavapai College with their Fab Lab. Those are pieces that, unique pieces, that companies are looking for because they want to come someplace to have the unique features. They can go anywhere, but if they're looking to expand out of Southern California, they want to go someplace where they know they can be successful. So going forward, to have the dialogue with the council members, with the mayor, with the staff, I think is absolutely important because we want to be that bridge from the, really, the external marketing and then the local leveraging of the resources we have here. So I can't give you a time. I like, I hope it's Monday, but you never know. And I've always, and I've been in this business a long time, and I know Jeff's been in it longer than me, you never know what that next phone call is going to be. And the stories have always been that 90% of their homework has been done before they make a top-five decision or a top-two decision. So that's very important that we have that information available in one capacity or another, so for them to make the decision. I get a lot of positive reports out of companies at the airpark that deal with a lot of traffic that comes through there. So I think there's a lot of opportunities. So it's just, I'm not a very patient person, so I can't say be patient, but I think there's a lot of good things to happen yet and to come.
Yeah, Richard, and I think, you know, you talk about the site selectors, and they're a whole different breed of people, and they're the ones that go out there first. It's not somebody from company XYZ, it's the site selectors. And when, you know, I think sometimes we get caught up, well, the internet's going to fix everything, but really, that's where those guys go first to check everything out. So I'm glad to see you're laying that foundation. Now, I think we've done a lot of laying down the foundation for success here in Prescott. When we talk, the infrastructure's there, you know, we've identified the airpark, we keep improving on that. We got the road system set up to take that on. We got the training tools, which can't be discounted. Yavapai College with their programs out there, Embry-Riddle, we got them right there, too. We can train a staff to come. I think one thing that we are definitely missing is an empty spec building waiting for someone to come in. It seems like companies now, they want to move into the building, they don't want to have to come here and build a structure. So it sounds like you're trying to work on that right now. You've got a lot of the things in place to be successful now with GPREP, looking at a regional level, because when these site selectors look, they're not looking at a city, they look at a region. But then here we have Jeff Burt, and he's kind of the cleanup crew for the City of Prescott. Once you get him, you could come in. Forty thousand is a lot of money for the City of Prescott right now, and we've pledged it to GPREP. Why is it necessary, and I know the answer to this, but I'd like to hear your answer to it. Why is it necessary to have GPREP and Prescott's own economic development engine?
Well, I think there's just two different layers there. And you have Arizona Commerce Authority with their level, and then you have the regional organizations in place. They're going to market the regional assets. And we're competing with the greater Flagstaff area, which has a regional organization. Yuma has a regional organization, Kingman has one, obviously, Phoenix has one, Tucson. We're trying to attract the attention to the region. Now, will I ever be the absolute expert on every individual community? Probably not. That's where, if somebody wants to come and visit the region or wants more information, that's when I call on Jeff and Wendy. You know, if we can get the attention taken off of maybe Phoenix or San Diego or Dallas-Fort Worth, which is another big competitor of ours, then we have a chance to be able to say, how about come here? And then we can work on a tour or we can put the information that's more local in front of them.
And I think you really emphasized the difference in, when you talk about competition, I think a lot of times when we talk about it, are we competing with Prescott Valley? Are we competing with Chino? You're talking about, we're competing with Fort Worth. This is a regional engine that we need to attract people to come in, and I'm so glad you're here. Last week, or two weeks ago, I talked about, I was a direct result of economic development, where I went from shovel and asphalt for 7:50 hour, I doubled my wage to a company that was attracted to the region, and I had an indoor job, and I was able to climb out of the hole, so to speak, that we find ourselves in. When you talk about a tourism job, you're looking at $8, $10 an hour. What is an average wage for light manufacturing that we hope to attract here? Do you know?
Well, probably in the neighborhood of, you know, I would say any $15, $16 with benefits to start. Because it's not, you know, you think, has anybody been out to the Fab Lab or out to the C-Tech?
Yes.
If you haven't been out there, take a tour of that place. I mean, these young people, manufacturing today is very different than it was even 10 years ago, five years ago. These individuals have to have some very good wherewithal, some education to them. So you just can't, I mean, there's trainable positions, but a lot of these positions now need some kind of certificate or advanced education beyond high school to be able to participate in the manufacturing operations of today. So you're not going to be able to pay $12, $13 and compete, you know, unless it's running a forklift. But that's the transient population of most workplaces. You want to get people into a position, so you're going to have to pay the wage. So that's what we're looking at as far as probably the starting wage in this area.
Well, I think we all are looking forward to that first big win, and I think that's right around the corner. Things are set up. I wish you the best. I've always believed in this, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And I look forward to working with the city and the staff as well. So everybody has my card, they know where to find me, so.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chris, thank you for bringing up infrastructure. As we're all very much aware, Prescott in the region has positioned this entire region with Yavapai Community College to begin with, Embry-Riddle University, Prescott College, a regional airport that Prescott provides, along with the state, along with the federal government. We have good roads. We just spent a ton of money on a good sewer system to upgrade it. We have a wonderful hospital. We've got all the things that are necessary to market this entire region. There's a reason why people come here for tourism, different than just going to Phoenix or Tucson or Yuma. It seems as though even God's on our side. He made us nice and cool. We've got trees rather than just cactus. We have things in our environment that include other things besides just rattlesnakes and scorpions. So here we are in Arizona, someplace that affords the world, someplace to come and enjoy all the things we have to offer. And that all comes under the definition of infrastructure. It's our job to seize the opportunity on letting the world know what exactly we have to offer here that's different than someplace else. So thank you, Richard.
Anyone else? Dane, Rich, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And my understanding is that there, the process is we're going to hear a presentation maybe quarterly, something along those lines in the future, so the council will be better informed, that's good.
Cool.
Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam B.
Adam B., discussion of fiscal year 2016 general fund mid-year budget adjustments.
Mayor and council, on October 6th, we laid out at great length possible adjustments to the fiscal year 2016 budget. And of course, those presentations were made by the respective general fund departments. That was followed by a special workshop on October 22nd, at which time interest was expressed in the development of, let's call it, call them alternative scenarios for further consideration. So in your packet for the meeting today, three scenarios have been developed. The first scenario incorporates the suggestions made by Councilman Arnold at the meeting of October 22nd. The second scenario would keep intact public safety sworn positions. That is, there would be no reductions in professional firefighters and sworn police officers. Any vacancies that exist would be filled. And then scenario three is a sharing, or a different version of sharing of cost savings, cost reductions, revenue enhancements among the general fund departments. So these three scenarios have been provided today for, or as a basis for a council discussion. And of course, any of them can be modified. So that's what we have for you today. We do not have a separate PowerPoint or a new PowerPoint presentation. What I did hand out to you today is the three scenarios with a couple of other pages or slides that have been presented in previous presentations. And of course, if council members would like to direct attention to any of the three scenarios, we can put that up on the board for you. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council, we're ready for any discussion the council may have.
Okay, thanks, Craig. Charlie, you're first.
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to clarify a few questions that have come up in the last few days. All three of these scenarios propose cuts that will have ongoing benefit to the budget. It's not that we're cutting $1.2 million and then next year we have to cut another $1.2 to match it. It is a cut of $1.2 that will no longer exist going forward. Is that accurate?
That's right. Any reductions must be permanent reductions in order for us to, number one, balance each year's budget, but number two, in order to balance the budget, remain current with our public safety personnel retirement system obligations, which are in large part driving this effort.
And you're indicating that based on forecasts, next year, you're going to be looking for $230,000 plus any of the increases identified in the PSPRS numbers.
That's an accurate statement as we sit here today.
And if the next council chooses to address the class and comp, that could be up to an additional million next year that would have to be addressed.
In the general fund.
Yes, sir. Okay. And following up with that line of thought and questions, looking out longer term, we know that every single year, we're projecting that the PSPRS costs will continue to rise. Is that accurate?
That burden will rise because... That burden will rise because of the rising cost of that pension system, and of course, to pay off, if you will, our unfunded obligations.
Okay. And then, last but not least, and I'm sure I'll come back later with some more, in some of these situations, we're getting very surgical and very specific into areas where we would like to see changes be made. In other areas, I think we're really getting down to a situation of telling a department head, "Here's the parameters that we need you to work within, and go forth and come up with a plan to set in place." I mean, none of these are turning around and saying to the fire department, "Go close the station or brown it out." But they are saying, "We have an issue, and chief, if you run into an operational challenge where, like we've had to do once already, that requires an amended response or a brownout, that's an operational decision, not a policy that we're setting."
I think that's accurate, Councilman. Mayor and council, on the other hand, the reason we went to such detail, and of course, we have moved from that detail to three scenarios, is if there are items that the council does not want to have reduced or eliminated, then it would be best that we know that.
And just going to scenario one for a quick moment, under fire in particular, the proposal that I've set forward would freeze the three vacant positions while the chief, and the council, and management work together to come up with a well-thought-out plan. We don't just shoot from the hip and do something, but a well-thought-out plan about how we're going to move the fire department forward. And I'll be quiet for a little while and come back later. Thank you.
Steve?
Well, I've looked at all three of these scenarios, and I guess, you know, it is what it is. From my standpoint, I'm looking out further than just our mid-year budget, I'm looking at next year, and the year after, the next 22 years, about how we generate new revenues to be able to sustain what we're doing here. And I find it very difficult to look at this and understand it's going to get us where we need to be today. I don't want to call it a Band-Aid, because some of these things are absolutely necessary. But I think, city manager, I think you've heard my concerns loud and clear, and I hope somebody's working on a business license, an adoption, and a dog license, and a bicycle license. I hope somebody's listening about having meaningful dialogue with the county to change how we fund the library through property tax instead of through a sales tax here in the community. It truly is not just Prescott's library, it's Yavapai County's library, the Prescott branch. I truly hope that some of these antiquated systems, that we just keep saying, "That's the way it is, and we have to live with it." I don't buy that for one minute, I think that's all garbage. And I think our supervisors are very receptive to the fact that they are the keepers of the purse string when it comes to the property tax, when it has to do with the library district. If it is truly the, I guess, the citizens of the county that want to fund a first-class library and have it open at all times at night, all times during the weekend, then the county needs to step up with the city and find a different form of providing services there called financial support. I don't think we can continue to go down the road and surgically eliminate jobs and response times from our fire department, response times from our police department, while keeping other entities and other parts of this budget intact until we find a new funding source. And that's what I'm looking for next year. We have got to have these dialogues sometime very soon to make something different than sitting through this every single year. It just makes no sense to me.
Mayor and council, if I could make a couple of remarks, this is a starting point. We have indicated our recommendation that we begin addressing the current year budget and make certain reductions to that budget to prepare us for fiscal year 17, and 18, and 19, and so forth. So this is a starting point. To your point about the following year and so forth, we have also identified that we will be in the same process during the budget formulation. So this is a prelude to another cycle, if you will, which will begin in early calendar year 2016, and culminate in June of 2016, hopefully with adoption of a budget. With respect to revenue sources, we have certainly been listening. Many of those have been identified and are included in the scenarios. For example, the business license tax is there. We have suggested that be addressed in fiscal year 17. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to set that up. So as we talked about months ago, you know, there were two scenarios at that time. The ballot measure, which would provide that separate or a new funding source for public safety personnel retirement system, would either pass or not pass. It did not pass. And so we are involved in the procedure that we outlined in detail during those months, that we were going to be faced with a continual dialogue on budget cuts, and that's exactly what we're engaged in today.
I appreciate that. I think what my huge concern is, is somebody that's born and raised here and all the things that Prescott has to offer, we just sit here listening to G-Prep tell us how wonderful the region is. And when we start cutting what very much makes up the fabric of this community, whether it be the Fourth of July fireworks, and whether it be our events manager that puts on all the things at the Courthouse Plaza, and all the things that we bring people in here. And from my standpoint, we very well could say, "Let's keep our event manager and put her in to the bed tax." I'm not sure, once we look back, after all this is said and done, we look back at what Prescott is becoming in the near future, or something I want to be part of. So I would suggest highly that we make those strides to make a difference, and find a new model, find a new funding source somehow or another, or convince this community, finally, that we're at the bare bottom, and we need to go back to the folks and get a tax extension for PSPRS. We didn't put ourselves in this position. PSPRS did. They put this community at harm, and I'm not proud of it, and now we're being asked as a council to try to figure out how to make up the difference on the back of our citizens. We've got to do it however we have to do it, but I hope sometime in the future, people realize that there's no free lunch out there, and everybody needs to pay their own way.
Mayor, I'm going to kind of fumble through this. You know, looking at our communities around us, Chino Valley's tax rate is at 4%. Prescott Valley is now at, I think it's 2.83%. Prescott's sitting at 2%. You know, we went to the voters, and we asked, "This is what we need to pay down our debt and keep things the way they are." And they did send us a message that said, "We don't want to pay more taxes," and that's a message to cut. You know, I think, I'm for the business license, but not as a revenue enhancer. I think we need to know what's going on in Prescott when it comes to the group homes, when it comes to vacation homes for rental. We have no idea who's doing what for business in downtown Prescott, if it wasn't for the PDP doing their survey every year. So I think that's good, but I think it needs to just be what it costs to administer it. And when we talk about licenses and fees, that's really a tax. We can recover money from that, we can make some money from that, but really, that's what the voters told us not to do. They don't want to pay any more money. So, you know, and also with those tax rates, got to bring it up again. They don't pay for a fire department outside. They pay extra for it on a separate tax item. $585 for a $200,000 home. You know, that's a lot of money for people to pay out, and we just suck it up out of the general fund, but we have the lowest property tax, we have the lowest sales tax by far. So, I mean, the message is there. We have to decide what kind of community we want to live in, and until we decide to fund that, we're going to have to make the cuts. And I know they're going to hurt, you know, no one wants to make Prescott less safe. But to say, public safety takes up 71% of our general fund. To say that we're not going to touch that, I think that's completely unrealistic. You know, and I feel bad about that, too, because we just got Patrol back up to where it needed to be, at its minimum levels. Well, it's going to hurt, and I hope in maybe a couple of years, we can maybe pass something that will help cover that. And meanwhile, while we're enjoying this low tax rate, we are not paying down our debt, and it shows nothing but signs of getting bigger and bigger. We're going to see it in November, it's going to grow, and I think there's going to be other accounting things that brought in that'll make it increase as well. So it's going to hurt, but we have to do it.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate getting the scenarios for us to get a little more focused and move toward actually making some decisions. After reading through them, I'm favoring scenario one, which kind of spreads the hurt around the general fund departments. And I honestly, after talking with both the police chief and the fire chief, don't believe they would be offering these level of cuts if they were really going to seriously impair the public safety of our community. They've talked about it, they've talked with their people in their department, and I think that they are coming a long way in agreeing to taking some cuts in their department, but they're not going to be cutting into the social fabric or the public safety of our community. So I can accept the proposal in scenario one for police and fire. I would like to see evaluation of our alarm registration system with a fee attached to that. We have fire alarms that are required, security alarms are not required, but I'm sure that many, many people in our community do have them. They're tied to the 911 call center. If we had a fee with that that also gave them the added benefit of a courtesy drive-by when they're on vacation, might be a little more palatable to pay such a fee, and that would be a way of increasing some of the revenue for that particular department, or the 911 call center, either one. The library is particularly important to me, and I think to this community. The council has received a large number of letters from people who are very passionate about the library, and I do agree that the library is essential to this community. It's a very special library. Yes, it would be great if we could continue to work with the county supervisors as the board of directors of the library district to get more funding, but I know that that has been tried, and they have tight budgets, too. I don't want the library to be hurt to the point where we have to close the doors so that working people can't get there, so that we have to cut children's programs. We need those things. The other day, there was a little Halloween party for preschoolers, and the founders' room in the library was packed with little tiny kids in their costumes, with their parents, moms and dads. It was just great. You know, it was in the morning, something that everyone in the community can come and enjoy and participate in for no cost. And I think it was a community benefit to have that, and the community rooms available for no cost for organizations that, well, for groups of people who are not organized into fee memberships, who don't have the ability to pay for meeting rooms. That's an important part of what we are as a community, to have that place to gather, the freedom to associate with each other, those things that we enjoy under the Constitution, Mr. Lamerson. I know you would agree. And we need that, that library. So I don't want to see quite the amount of cut that scenario one proposes. There's a $115,000 cut there. I'd like it to be less. I would suggest $80,000 to $90,000, and give the library director the discretion on whether or not its positions or materials or whatever. In fact, all of these departmental decisions should be left up to the discretion of the department director and the city manager. As far as revenue enhancements, we call them, we really have to, we have no choice. We really have to look at other ways of raising money. The voters said no to the two sales taxes, and now we have to find other ways that we have within our authority as a city council to enact. And we have the authority to adopt fees, charge fees, which, yes, Councilman Kukneal, they are like taxes, but they are fees for special things that certain customers enjoy. We give away a lot of free things right now in the city. You know, for example...
The library.
(laughing) Okay. For example. Well, the library, yes and no. Okay. If you call the fire department and you have a snake in your yard, they will bring out a red truck and two firefighters to remove that snake. If you have a cat stuck in the tree, the fire department will come and remove that cat. Now, could we think of another model for providing that service? Could we refer that call to a private vendor rather than bringing out the big red trucks and consuming gasoline and wearing down our emergency personnel? By the way, somebody wrote a letter that said, "Leaving these guys sitting around the station doing nothing is nothing but bureaucratic bloat." I couldn't disagree more with that statement. Those people have to be ready all the time. They're emergency response people. If we have an emergency, we want them to be healthy, alert, and ready to go on the job. And it's not just sitting around. They're training, they're making sure the equipment is repaired, they're making sure that things are maintained, and they're communicating with each other. They're also interacting with other agencies. So that is not, to me, bureaucratic bloat. In addition to evaluating the alarm registration system, I brought up before the idea of evaluating our dog licensing system. And I got some interesting comments on that one after I put it out there on the council floor. Some people contacted me, and one person said, "You know, the system is broken. We either need to fix it or get rid of it." And after finding out a few more things about our dog licensing program, I agree. We have a lot of dogs in this community, but I doubt that all of them are registered, and they really should be. Rabies is a serious problem, once it gets started. Rabies vaccinations are required by state law, and we need a system that makes sure that they're not only licensed, but they have those vaccinations. And that revenue from that program, right now, I only paid $2 for a dog license a few weeks ago. If we charged a little bit more for a dog license, we could generate enough money to support the animal control officers and maybe some more other functions in the police department. Bicycle registration, I'm not opposed to that at all. I think it's a good idea, because it's an opportunity to provide educational materials to bicyclists, and also a means to recover a stolen bike. The police will know when they find that bike, who it belongs to, get it back in their hands as quickly as possible. I've lived in several communities with bike registration programs. They were voluntary, but they worked, and they were great. I really don't want to see any layoffs in public safety. And, you know, it's tempting to get in here and manipulate positions, and I was feeling like a kid in the candy store when I saw this list and said, "Oh, boy, we can eliminate this, we can eliminate, we can add this." But that's not our job. Our job is to tell the manager what policies we want to see enacted. Yes, we want our community safe. Cut where you cut the nonessential things. Now, maybe special events is something nice for our community to have, but for this time, maybe it's something we need to cut back on so that we can hold the line on too many more cuts. Okay, that's it.
That's it? Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McConnell, and those folks that work for you that have continually worked hard to bring forward different ideas and concepts, in no way do I intend this to be any sort of criticism, because that's not what it's meant to be. I've still yet to see model changes for delivering certain levels of service that I can get my hands around. I have difficulty understanding that we provide at the level of service we deliver today, police and fire, at a cost of about $19 million, knowing full well that the revenue that we... we have to work with, that being the one cent sales tax, generates between 12 and 13. That's hard for me to grip because I haven't seen anything that comes in other than we can depend on shared revenue or we can depend on grants to make up the difference when we are fully aware that shared revenue can be swept and grants aren't always something you can count on, or sometimes grants have tag-ons that saddle us with more expenditure at a later date. What I haven't seen is anything that has to do with any sort of auxiliary service delivery models, which includes both a reserve program or volunteer fire department program or any of that sort of stuff, to where we maintain a level of service, but we're using a different model to deliver it to the taxpayer. If you look hard enough, we can always find areas to agree or disagree. And I agree with Gene with regards to licensing of dogs and licensing of bicycles and things like this, but that's not going to make up the revenue that's necessary to approach running the city for a proposed budget of $34 million, not to mention the $19 million for O and M for police and fire only, when you only have a revenue stream. I mean, there's a big disconnect between what we're proposing to pay for and what we have coming in. So we're making progress. I don't think that cuts is the only way you're going to be able to do it. I think model changes of delivery make some sense, and I think there are some cuts that make some sense. And maybe there's some services we provide more than the taxpayers are willing to pay for. That may be true also. I mean, we heard that loud and clear in the last election. So anyway, I think we still need to be on the drawing board and see what else we can come up with.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we've got to really change our way of thinking, too, and allow new ways of thinking, especially when it comes to service models. Got a call from my wife today and says, "The fire trucks are helping our friend again." Well, this is the guy who, homeless man who pushes his little wheelchair around that the firemen told me that they respond to 200 to 300 times a year. You know, would it be cheaper to get this guy an apartment? Would he be happier if he was warm and snugly? Would he not be calling? Because if these guys are servicing this guy 200 to 300 times a year, they're not available to do other things. We're short in our department by doing that. And I think we need to give the rank and file the freedom to come up with these ideas as well. And I think they probably have conduits for that, but I've always said, "A guy who does a job eight hours a day knows how to do it better, knows how to do it well," so, and knows how to improve what he's doing. So no matter how wacky the idea is, and I don't know how, because when they responded, when they said they responded to this guy 200 to 300 times a year, they also said, "Oh, yeah, we have a few of those in town." So is there ways that we can actually add to the fire staffing just by changing the way we do some things? And maybe, and I don't want to get that guy an apartment, I do want to get the guy an apartment, but is there other ways to fix that?
Craig, my, Charlie, thanks for the work you did. I think that there's a lot of merit to it. The reductions are anticipated. You could move, that could happen after the first year. But the additions, it's going to take time. What's your plan to bridge that gap? Some of these revenue enhancements, I could say, would almost take a year by the time you go through the process. What's that going to do to you on July 1st of next budget year? If you've made the reductions, but you have not been able to move ahead with all of the increases, is that just going to make your deficit that much greater?
Well, absolutely it will. If we're not either having, if we haven't made cuts or we haven't enhanced the revenue, then it is going to make it more difficult. And that's why, you know, some weeks ago, when we began discussion of this, the initial approach was about budget reductions. And certainly, we understand that there are many opportunities for revenue enhancements, but the initial approach was to do hard cuts at mid-year. Because it's going to take time to, you know, set the fees, go through the process, provide the notifications and so forth, that was more of a fiscal year '17 or a new budget year emphasis for those. But we understand that it's not always as easy as one or the other. It's a combination of both.
Well, that's kind of where I'm leading to, was my understanding, that you went to the department heads and said, "Here's what we need to end up with." And the reductions took us to that point.
Well, it was a combination, Mayor, of what was submitted was reductions and revenue enhancements. And then subsequently, of course, we've identified other ones.
Okay, but the enhancements could come along pretty fast in that scenario?
No, there's still that due process. You know, when you look at the revenue enhancements of some weeks ago, they were really in two places. They were in recreation services, and they were in community development, which are fees. And of course, as we discussed, those have to be made according to a specific process.
Okay. Charlie, one question on your plan. I think I counted 19 emails today having to do with the library. Apparently, there was a crusade went on over the weekend. And I don't know how many emails that I've received. And across the board, they were all, "Please don't touch the library. It's too important, please don't do it." And one of the emails, I've already discounted it, but mentioned that there was one organization that met eight times a year using our facilities at the library that comprised about 100 people each time, each one of their meeting. And I'm having a very difficult time of understanding why 100 people that meet eight times a year in our library facilities wouldn't be willing to throw a couple of bucks in the pot each time they held a meeting. There's something missing in our ability, and Steve, you've been saying a long time, to develop a revenue source that still complies with the letter of the, I understand, the free library system. But I was raised in a little country town in West Texas, and we paid for a library when I was a kid. It wasn't much, I think it was a dollar a year or something. But I think there's been a cost involved with libraries at least all my life. So, Charlie, you didn't use any enhancement at all in your, and the other, admittedly, we could earn $26,000. Was there a reason that you backed off on that?
Yep. Mayor, I think, specific to that one, because we've had a pretty in-depth discussion on meeting room fees, my expectation of the library department would be that over these next six months and the formulation of the '17 budget, that they're going to look at revenue enhancement opportunities and bring them forward. And I know that the meeting room fee one has been controversial, but one thing that I'm still looking for with the library is a actual piece-by-piece evaluation of the law or what was passed that allowed the free library district to be created. Legal interpretation of what is prohibited, what is allowed, and what's in the gray area, so that we aren't just saying, "Well, because someone said, we can't do this." But that's my thing on the library is, I expect that Roger has more than gotten the message that the library, just like many of our other departments, has to look at doing business differently going forward, and there's clearly an opportunity for them to do that. And I've got a few comments on that when we come back around.
Well, what I was hoping in the stack of emails was that there would be some suggestions of helping rather than just, "Don't touch it."
Yep.
That it just, with all the difficulty we've had, it just seems to be selfish.
Mayor, one suggestion that Councilman Arnold made a couple of months ago, I think, was adding a donation box on our utility bills, and we could specify, "Library donation."
Probably had to put a lock on it, or a chain. Great.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to correct something, that adjusts what Steve had said. The reason we're here is not because of the PRSP. I mean, that's the tool that's happened. We're here because several years ago, the citizens of Arizona voted on a constitutional amendment that allowed this board to make these adjustments in charged cities. We're here because we're the oldest community in Arizona. Others will follow after us. To fix this is not going to happen here. It's not even going to happen on the state legislator's side. It's got to go back to the citizens of Arizona to change the Constitution. That's going to take three to five years to happen. All of these proposals, I'm not happy with any of them. In three to five years, none of this is going to matter. Getting businesses licensed, because we won't have a business here. There's nothing going to be anything left to economic development. Nobody wants to move here. Water, you don't have to worry about water because nobody's going to be around to use it. So, I mean, all these are going to fix itself because there ain't going to be anybody in town because of this. So, I don't know. In the next five years, because we are kicking this down the road, I'm willing to choose safety and hope that it gets fixed and go for necessity over once.
Charlie?
Mayor, thanks. And, you know, Greg, I agree that part of the reason we, as a city, are where we are is because of some decisions that were made a long time ago that are having a dramatic impact on our future. We are here today, and our staff has said we need to look at $1.2 million in cuts mid-year with more to come. And, you know, along the thought process, if you look at Scenario 2, where our focus is everywhere but public safety, we're cutting 1.6% of the 13 and $8 million budget. Everywhere else that we are annihilating will leave no option next year but public safety. You will either completely eliminate these departments, or you will have to start gutting public safety. Scenario 1 and 3, start the process of saying, "Fire department, we have to think about how we're going to provide our service and do it differently. Library, you've got a year. Come back to us with something that's going to provide a way for us to deal with the services we're providing. Recreation services, you know, Joe's got a $2 million budget, came up with $65,000 in reductions and a way to produce $100,000 of new revenue. Imagine what else we can do if we start thinking outside the box. And what if we put tourism under recreation services next year? They're the ones bringing everyone in for the tournaments, that are bringing them in for all the big events. There are options after options to continue to pursue, but 1 and 3 get us to a level playing field to move forward. Otherwise, next year, we're going to have to really start focusing on not eliminating vacant positions and freezing them in public safety. We won't be talking about how do we retain our officers and firefighters who are leaving. You all will be sitting here talking about how many boots-on-the-ground positions are we cutting this year because we didn't start laying good groundwork now." Talking to Gene's point for just a moment and to the mayor's point, I really do believe that the library can find ways to find these efficiencies, look for fee opportunities. You know, to Gene's point, I think going down to $80,000 in cuts is too low. I would be happier at the $90,000 rate with Roger figuring out what he wants to do within that department. I'm not a librarian. I still think we can take the $10,000 a year we're spending on radio ads and eliminate them. And I do think the dog license opportunity is significant. That's money for recreation services, that's money for our police department, that's money to the general fund. There are opportunities. We have a lot of dog lovers who use a lot of services here, and if we have a dog license fee, we should enforce it. And ultimately, I'm not happy about having to say to somebody who, by the way, I walk by one of these offices every day and have to look that individual in the eye while I'm saying, "I'm supporting eliminating your job." That's not exactly the funnest thing in the world, but it's the reality of where we are. And my hope would be that a modified Scenario 1 is what a majority of this council would support, to lay the groundwork, give staff the six months to prove up some of these fee opportunities, take the opportunity for the public comment. Sandy has been good about calling me and asking questions on these fees, and we need input from the people that are going to be impacted. But we have to get this community to a point where individuals that are asking for specific services are paying for the services that are being offered. That's where we have to get to. And if we were able to vote today, I would be a yes vote for a modified Scenario 1. And I will be next Tuesday if that's the direction we go.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do the best I can do at this. I'm not real good at reading, but I'm going to read it. "The council shall have the power to levy and collect taxes in addition to interest and maintain the sinking fund and the bonded indebtedness of the city, and to provide for the establishment and support of free libraries, and for advertising the advantages of the city, and an additional amount deemed to be necessary or advisable and necessaries to create a reserve and provide for replacement of equipment, and for furnishing of city services," that means police and fire, too, "and the maintenance of all municipally-owned and operated facilities. The council shall have the power to level a transaction privilege tax, provided that no transaction privilege tax, if based on gross income, gross receipts, or gross proceeds of sale, shall be levied at a rate in excess of the present 1%, unless such rate is approved by the majority of the qualified electors voting on the question at a special election or general election. Further, provided that should a transaction privilege tax not be based on gross income, gross receipts, or gross proceeds of sale, the council shall have the power to fix the amount of license taxes to be paid by any person, firm, corporation, or association for carrying on any business, game, or amusement, calling, profession, or occupation." That was adopted and proposed to this city originally in 1979, and again ratified at the last election under the charter. That was a charter change that was made 30, 40 years ago, was re-sanctioned every time this community has sanctioned this charter that we act under right now. So I would defer to my attorney to define exactly what I just read and what that means. And if I'm not mistaken, it has something to do with this council, by the will of the electorate of this community, has the authority to invoke business licenses, et cetera, as long as it's not in the manner of a transaction privilege tax based on the gross volume or expense of the product. Can you respond to that, sir?
Mayor, if Mayor and Council, Councilmember Lamerson basically read three paragraphs of the city charter, the first one being a general authority to raise revenues, to pay for various specific things, as well as more general things. The next paragraph, so that's an unlimited sort of grant of power to the council to be able to raise revenues. However, when you're talking about reading statutes or reading law, there's a term that says the specific governs over the general. The next specific provision says the council can charge a 1% transaction privilege tax based on revenues or sales, cannot raise, cannot go above that unless the voters approve it. And as we know, we have 2% sales tax, 1% as a general authority, and another 1% approved by the voters for open space in streets, and then effective January 1, streets and roads. The third provision talks about the council being able to raise revenues by way of a general business tax. So that would, that allow, that's a specific grant of power to the council to implement a business license program. And I know there's been discussion today about fees and taxes. And the council can charge a fee for a business license. And a fee is, as Councilmember Will Cox said... And a fee is, as Councilmember Will Cox said, essentially a fee for a service, a fee for a particular benefit. And so, generally speaking, fees are supposed to cover no more than the cost of the service. So oftentimes, cities don't do full cost recovery, the fees are less than what it costs to actually implement a program. So, for instance, a fee for a business license would be something in the range of $10, $15, $20, $25, whatever the cost of the program is. In addition to that, however, the city is allowed to charge a general business tax associated with a business license, which is a tax. It's not a return on investment, it's not, it's not a fee for a service, it is a tax. And the tax is based on, and it's broader than a transaction privilege tax, because transaction privilege tax implies essentially retail sales. This one talks about any firm, any business, any enterprise, any amusement would be charged a business tax. And the discussion, as you recall, was it would be, it could be tiered and tied to, for instance, the need for a particular industry or category of business, their, the demand on public safety. There could be three tiers, there could be five tiers sometimes, I think, you know, and it becomes a policy decision about how simple, you know, simpler is better than more complex. And, and so, the, the analysis is, the city council could adopt a business license tax in addition to a fee, an annual payment by a business, every business, every person, every firm, every enterprise that does business in the city, there may be a few exceptions under state law, but generally speaking, every, every enterprise that does business in the city would pay a business tax for, based on it, the industry or category demand on public safety. And, and that would be something that would be based on data, information that we would pull from both taxes and licensing, as well as, for instance, the, the dispatch center. Because we tie, we kind of know what types of addresses, what types of businesses have a greater demand on fire services, police services, code enforcement, those types of things. So it is a, obviously a significant policy decision for the council, but it is doable under the city charter.
Now, did I understand you to say that this would have to be tied to the, the proportion of need for public safety?
Well, that would be one way of doing. In other words, if you're going to tie, if you're going to dedicate this tax revenue to public safety, to helping fund public safety, obviously it's not going to fund, it's not going to be a $19 million a year generator. But as a policy decision, you could implement a business license tax dedicated, the funding of which is dedicated to helping fund public safety, the, the rational basis for it would be, in what tier would you, you fall as a business? And in, let's say there are three tiers, for example, if you are a low, if your industry is a low demand on general public safety, you pay the lowest tier. If your industry is the highest demand on public safety services, whether it's police, fire, code enforcement, whatever, you would be in the higher tier. And then maybe there's an intermediate tier. And we know from the ICMA report, or a study and analysis and presentation, that there are certain clusters of businesses that, that have a generally high demand on, on fire, for instance. And, and the best example is a lot of the assisted living have a significant demand, a disproportionate demand even, on fire calls, on the fire department. So they, so that type of industry may be in a higher tier than, let's say, your barber shop, which may be in the lowest tier.
Since you brought that up a month and a half ago, I've talked to some of the other, the mayors around the state, and the devil's in the details of, you've got a large jewelry store and you've got a small jewelry store, is that fee the same to both? You've got a large car dealer and you've got a small car dealer, is that fee the same across the board? This is what I'm told, is the, is the problem of trying to establish something that's fair across the board. And, so, if it's something the, we can't do it in the next two weeks, we know that. And what we're talking about is trying to find some solutions that will take care of the next year. So I, I think it's well taken, I think the entire new council is probably in the room, and they're listening to this conversation.
And just for process purposes, any, any new fee, or any amended or increased fee, at a minimum, is, we're required to go through a 60-day posting process before it can be adopted. And that doesn't mean before, and then normally when you, especially if you adopt something by inordinance, there's usually a 30-day period before it actually goes into effect. Oftentimes, for something like this, which is fairly complex, you may have a delayed effective date to give people the sort of the ability to get, you know, get things lined up so that they acquire licenses, they pay the fee. It may, and I think it's not unreasonable to think of July 1st, if it's, if the process starts relatively quickly, as the sort of ultimate effective date, so you really are talking about the next budget year. It could be done slightly sooner, but probably not a whole lot.
Mark, you better get ready to build an army of collectors.
Marlon, here again, the reason for bringing that portion of the charter up was to have it on public record in front of the public, that it's the public of the city of Prescott that has empowered the, the city council with not only the responsibility, but the capability of doing what's necessary in order to address what's become apparent. We're not able to address it through a general sales tax to create the revenue that's necessary to provide the level of service in both police and fire that we enjoy in this city as we live, breathe, and speak, under the, under the program we have today.
Yeah. John, my, the question I was going to end up with was, can you, can, you, you can't, it can't be a sales tax. Can it be tied to some type of a gross revenue to determine the tier that you would fall in?
No, no, in fact, the charter is very specific, can't be tied, tied to revenues or sales, those kinds of things. Essentially has to be, for lack of a better term, a flat tax, a dollar amount per year. It could be one dol, one dollar amount for everybody across the board, but I think in, in having prior discussions, there was an interest in sort of a more fair approach, and that's why I think the discussion went to these sort of tiers or these levels of three, five, maybe levels. And, and it could be based on, however, square footage, not necessarily directly tied to number of employees, but I think the, if you're going to dedicate it to public safety, then the, probably the most rational way or rational basis to do it, and the most sort of legally defensible, is to, is to place all of the businesses in, in categories and say, you know, what's the demand, what's your general demand on public safety, and just sort of make cutoffs at some point, as cap, not as individual businesses, but as categories. So it wouldn't be small jewelry store versus large jewelry store, it may be small retailer versus medium to large retailer, it may be, you know, liquor establishment versus restaurant without a liquor license. So I think it's more subject matter rather than necessarily size, which creates a demand on public safety.
Well, you've got a couple of hundred group homes to prime the pump.
Well, and I will tell, I mean, group homes would be, would, you know, would be, could be required to have licenses and pay a tax. Certainly even nonprofits would be required to get the license, pay for the license fee. We still have to look into whether it's, they could be charged a flat tax because, because it's not based on revenue. There is an argument to be made that even nonprofits, nonprofit, you know, businesses in town could, could be charged a flat tax for, as a dedicated public safety revenue. Everything from, from, and even, you know, manufacturers and employers who don't actually have sales could, you know, because they're operating a business in town, would pay, you know, under, under this type of thing, because they're business, they have a business license. And if, if ultimately vacation rentals, which are now sort of in violation of the zoning code, if that ever became, you know, legal or legitimized, the vacation rentals could also pay not only business license, but a, a business tax as well.
Okay. Well, we've got, we've got a week to decide. Steve?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, I appreciate Charlie's hard work on that scenario one in a big way, and I, I said it very clearly and early on, that I wouldn't support anything that had anything to do with cutting public safety, and, and I still stand behind that. I remember back, the chief of the police department standing in front of the podium here, talking about how some of the things do affect our service from the police department. And, you know, we're losing guys, I think we've lost four or five now, based upon paying comp study, not getting paid, other, other communities paying more than we do, their levels of what they receive as far as healthcare and everything else is a function of all that. It ties into this whole very conversation that we're having right now. I don't want people here to forget about that. And from my standpoint, when they brown out a fire station or the response times get longer, I cannot, cannot fathom cutting public safety, that's two of the main essentials. So Charlie, even though I appreciate all your hard work, I won't be supporting scenario one unless it's modified to take public safety out.
Well, is there a scenario that does not cut public safety?
Number two.
Mayor, realizing that next week we're proposing to vote on a decision, again, I've given some notes on scenario one that I'd be willing to modify that I think makes sense. I'd like to see scenario one modified, move forward.
Well?
Today's a direction day, next Tuesday's a vote day.
I appreciate all that, and you know, you were making the comments about, and this is not intended to beat up the library, because I swear I would really like the county to take it over and have everybody in this community and in the county pay on their property tax to fund that thing to its fullest extent. But I don't believe, based upon two years ago, as me being in the liaison, talking with the library and our assistant city manager, that there needed to be something that happened before 2015, and here we are, 2015, and we're still sitting in that same place. I don't believe that anybody that's a participant in the library, based upon what Roger has said to us, that there's 26,000 library cards issued at the library, has anybody been asked if they'd be willing to donate? I'm not asking that we handcuff people that are poor or can't afford to do anything, and have we thought about a kiosk at all three doors to, to donate when they can donate? We need to make some changes and quit closing our eyes and saying, "Oh, God, let's not touch the library." Ask for a donation.
And Steve, to that point, I don't disagree that asking is perfectly fine. The issue is, we can't rely on that as a known source of revenue to pay for the operations. Maybe in a few years we can, but we can't right now.
No, that's, that's an absolute, that's a given. But one thing is a given, when people jumped up and down and talked about, "How dare we put kiosks at the Peavine Trail, and my taxes have already paid for my recreation services." But they don't pay for the upkeep, they don't pay for the bathrooms that we put on the Peavine Trail, they don't pay for any of those things. And since we put those three kiosks out there, we've generated over $100,000. I don't call $100,000 chicken feed. That's part of a donation when help offset somebody's job, or two jobs that we're now slicing in this budget. We need to start making it real, and we need to have those real conversations with the county about the county funding in perpetuity on the county library. There's only ones that can do this. They were given that opportunity by the state of Arizona to have a library district. Let's use that. And if they're worried about whether they're going to get reelected, maybe they won't get reelected if they don't help us address this issue.
Yeah. I think the, in that particular area, that the supervisors have been listening to us for a long time, and I haven't seen anything come out of there that would give us any encouragement. Chief, on the police side, just a quick question, and I don't mean to get a conversation going. In scenario two, you're suggesting that maybe it's possible to reduce overtime by 75,000. Now, what I understand is that the overtime, in many cases, is what gives your people the ability to make enough money to hang around Prescott. And if you take away their overtime, then they are not, we're not competitive with their overall payroll needs. Is that a correct?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to, to respond to that. And let me begin by, first of all, thanking Mayor and Council. You know, the, the issue before you is certainly a challenge, and this, Mayor and Council, I know you've worked on it at the state level for long-term pension reform, and you've grappled with it right here, because even with reform, if reform happened today, we still owe the back pension. And so, certainly appreciate the support Mayor and Council have had for public safety and your efforts in this arena. The challenge with the overtime for us, the overtime cut would be those areas of the special events where we pay overtime for quality-of-life events. We would want to reserve our overtime then for law enforcement-specific functions, crime scenes where our individuals are called out and they're out on long-term. The, the idea behind using overtime to help supplement the income is problematic in a number of ways. We may have officers out that are working 12, 14, 16 hours, and sure, they're getting overtime, but there's also a, a potential health deterioration that we have to be concerned with. We do enjoy off-duty employment within the city, Mayor and Council has supported that. Certainly thank you for ongoing support there. And so our officers do have those opportunities that they're able to schedule based on family commitments and other personal activities. But the overtime cuts that we propose, and I see here in scenario two, would be those special functions that are not necessarily law enforcement-specific.
Okay, so that wouldn't be considered a cut?
Sir?
And that would not be considered a cut, then? The 75,000?
Right, we would, we would.
You would not look at that as a cut in your budget?
Right, it would be an activity that we would be not performing.
Okay.
And Mayor, in scenario one, we still account for 50,000 there, but one of the underlying currents with, in the fire department fees, and I think it would carry over to PD, is any special events that were put on, and all the city events that we currently put on going out to the private sector to operate, they would need to pay for the police presence, just as they would for fire. We wouldn't be giving that away to special events.
Okay. You've got one more.
Yeah, Mayor, I just was kind of tagging on with Steve's conversation. I think Gene had a suggestion that was very simple, and that was putting a little box on our water bills. That would be very easy to do, and, and people that are passionate about the library could do the donation, and there's some people that are probably passionate about the library that never even go to the library. So, you know, I thought that was a great idea, Gene, and that's something that we could do almost overnight.
Unfortunately, I think, if my memory serves me right, and Mark Woodfield might know this, the utility bills, we, we can't do what we had hoped because of some constraints there.
Yeah, it's, it's not simple at all to put that on the utility bills. There's issues with the size of the bill already, is that one full page, we have to go to a two-page bill. We use a lockbox to help reduce the number of employees, trying to handle these through the lockbox is very difficult. There's just a lot of problems with it. In addition, about 40% of our, our utility customers pay online or pay with direct pay into their account. If any of you've been, been involved with the program that APS has, the shares, there's a whole list of issues they have with that program as well. I appreciate that it may sound easy, but there's a lot of complications in the details of that.
Never mind, Gene, that was a horrible idea.
But, that doesn't mean that the idea of creating an avenue for residents of the city of Prescott or visitors to contribute to different funds shouldn't be explored. It's just the utility billing is probably not the way to do it.
Okay. We're going to move along. That, for public consumption, the, the clock is one hour early. It's actually 10 minutes till four. I think daylight savings time, it didn't move the clock or something, or it didn't move it, so. Let's go on to, we'll talk about this in a week, looks like. Let's go to item C.
Item C, discussion of the city's water portfolio, water management policies, and availability of water for new development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good afternoon to you.
Thank you. Today's item follows and advances the topic presented to council on Tuesday, October 27th, and a discussion that was within the Water Issues Subcommittee on, held on Friday, October 30th. Councilman Arnold, Arnold is the chairperson of the Subcommittee and will be sharing the committee's recommended actions, which will be shown in slides five through seven. And I will present slides one through four with introductory information on this continuing work project. So to refresh, the alternative water balance without reservations, the balance available is 314 acre feet as of January 2015. The alternative water budget for calendar 15 was set at 100 acre feet. When the 314 acre feet is allocated to new development, meaning placed into contract, the category within the overall portfolio will have been exhausted, except for minimal quantities that may be returned unused to the, excuse me, unused from expired contracts. quantities that may be returned unused to the, excuse me, unused from expired contracts. Once again, as a refresher, we have two tables. Table One, we've been tracking the Water Service Agreement applications that have been submitted as of October 26th. And the second table is the pre-application conferences that are held. These have not been moved towards an application yet, but they've been considered in this process as well. And that moves us to Slide Five. Councilman Arnold, do you need the pointer to advance?
No, if, when we just get through the bottom of each number, if you would.
I certainly, sir.
Do that for me, I'd appreciate it. Mayor and Council, first, I'd like to thank staff for their work on this, as well as Councilman Blair and Lamerson, who also serve on the Water Committee. We were tasked with looking at some options related to our current water situation, and after holding our Water Issues Committee meeting last week, we have come forward with some recommendations that we would ultimately recommend that we move forward on either a resolution or whatever would be the appropriate mechanism. Number one, and before I get into number one, I think it's very important to clarify for every person that's listening and every person that's going to read about this, alternative water is one of many buckets of water that the City of Prescott has. This is in no way saying that the City of Prescott is A, out of water, or B, we don't have water to serve existing subdivisions. We are addressing a specific volume of water that is limited, that currently has a lot of people asking for it. So, recommendation number one is temporarily suspend for the next 60 to 90 days, accepting any new applications for alternative water supply. And that would go into effect, basically, as of the last application received in the two spreadsheets that you previously saw. The other exception to that is that there are currently 2.6 acre-feet of requests that have met all of the requirements, they have their building permit, they're ready to go. The Water Service Agreement is the last step, it's a minimal amount of water. It would normally be done administratively, we would recommend that those go ahead and proceed, and any that are subject to the CVID agreement would have to proceed. But unless you're on the current list, we are stopping, under this recommendation, accepting any additional applications. Number two, so that staff has clear direction, we would prioritize the allocation of the remaining water by type of development. This is not setting a priority to the list that's in place, this is step one of what will become two very important parts. Those priorities would be workforce housing, apartments in multifamily, no additional new subdivisions which have not already been applied for or are being serviced by other water, no new residential lot splits, other than those that have been applied for currently, and continue to accept commercial and industrial applications once we determine the volume of water that's available. It gets complicated, but when you build a new house, we hit you for .35 acre-feet, a portion of that has been allocated for commercial, and there is some time that needs to be handled to take a look at what that allocation bank is for commercial and industrial. Number three, which ties into these priorities that we are recommending, will be for the next council and staff to create a list of specific priorities and look at how we're going to move forward, and that's also item four, which is develop and apply performance criteria for new water service agreements and extension requests. This will not happen overnight, it's going to probably take 30 to 60 days to come up with a specific policy for the council to approve, at which point the city would be in a position to move forward in dealing with our current water allocation requests. When we talk about performance criteria, there is a subdivision that, for almost 10 years, has had a water allocation, and with the exception of one or two steps that they have taken in many, many years ago, they have not done anything. And they're coming to the city asking for a water extension, tying up almost 80 acre-feet of the city's water from other projects being able to utilize it. These performance criterias would set forth a process and a policy that says, if you are going to be given water from the alternative water supply, then you must do A, B, C, D, and E within certain time frames. It's project-specific, but from a water policy standpoint, the committee feels that this is extremely important. And I, once we get through this, I'd be happy to have our other committee members address it. Number five, shift 200 acre-feet of the reservation that has been made for residentially-zoned properties within the city. There's currently 585 acre-feet. We would shift 200 feet of that to the future Big Chino Source. This is a bucket that is slowly, slowly being used, and will give the city the opportunity to look at long-term water management policies, while also making available into the future 200 acre-feet to deal with the current applications and future applications that move the city forward. Currently, the total availability for calendar year 2015, the city council said we will make 100 acre-feet of that available. The bottom line is, we're not going to award a majority of that during this calendar year, and we will need to make more water available next year to dispense with the current list of requests that we have. However, by shifting the 200 acre-feet, we will also prolong our water supply in the alternative portfolio, providing us opportunities for the future. Once we accomplish all of this, once we set forward a policy on performance criteria, we memorialize our priorities as a community in moving forward, we make the water shift, the city can then safely be in a position, in my opinion, to start accepting applications for an allocation of alternative water supply following those recommendations. Recommended actions, number two, these are the things that go far above and beyond what we can do in a 30 to 60-day period. Number one is continue to identify what the available water for commercial and industrial is. We need to look at, how do we prohibit the connection to city water if someone has a well that is now double-dipping out of the aquifer? Prohibit well drilling on properties that have been given an alternative water supply or a water supply of any sort. There's a subdivision in town where nearly every single week, somebody's drilling a new well, and there's a city water line sitting there, and then after they get their well, they come ask the city, "Can I have a water meter, too?" And it's a situation that screws up our allocation and our issues with the City of Prescott, or, excuse me, with the state of Arizona. Number four, require new development to connect to the city sewer, we need to ensure that we're recovering the effluent. Adopt city code changes where required to implement the foregoing actions. Again, this isn't going to happen in two weeks, this is something that will take time. Continue to research and evaluate historical agreements, they continue to pop up and surprise us on a regular basis. Review and adjust availability of pricing at the water station on Easy Street. Currently, you can pull up with a water tank, water trailer, you can pay 25 cents, I believe, per 100 gallons and haul off water from the City of Prescott to anywhere you want. You can drive it 400 miles away if you so desire. Develop a policy for accepting assured water supply certificates brought into the city. That's something we're going to see with future annexation requests and with people who want to develop properties within the city. Continue to review our allocation based on the .35 for single-family and the .25 acre-feet for multifamily. So this is very much a two-stepped recommendation. If you focus on Part One, our recommendation would be that staff brings forward something at the next voting meeting to implement the temporary suspension, set the initial prioritization, and then that would allow the Council of Water Issues Committee to develop the performance criteria, set the policy so that the city can start issuing water agreements somewhere around the first quarter of next year. And I would open it up to either of the members of the committee, should they have anything they'd like to add.
Agreed.
I'd just like to say one thing, and I normally don't throw around compliments, because I'm, I'm always sincere about them, so I just don't throw them around. This, Charlie, Jim, Steve, this is responsible, good policy, and thank you.
Does that mean you support it? Okay. Gene?
Well, I agree with you, Greg. I'd like to add a couple things. On number two, immediate measures, I think we need to give the highest priority to new development, which builds into their structure, water conservation, and rainwater catchment measures, so that they are well-equipped to use less water from the get-go. I know we can't change people's behavior until we actually put a shut-off valve on any meter, every meter in the city, but people will get used to using low-flow, even more efficient low-flow plumbing features and rainwater catchment systems, if they're provided to them. If they don't have to go out and spend extra money to add them on and retrofit, they will be there and they will be used.
Gene, if I could, just on that one, the committee discussed that, and part of number nine in Part Two, and part of Item Four, but more specifically Nine, is intended that those types of discussions would take place. One concern that we had and that staff would need to address is, would the state recognize any benefit to our portfolio by prioritizing that and utilizing, could it adjust the .25, the .35? But it certainly is something that's intended as part of the larger picture to be discussed.
Okay, I understand that there is a provision in the ADWR regulations which would allow us to lower that .35 allocation from alternative water sources if the construction is designed to conserve water. The other thing I would add is that we move up in priority the consideration of the Easy Street Water Station. Consider putting a cap on the amount of water a single, individual consumer can get and charge them the third-tier rate. Why should they be getting water cheaper than what we have to pay when we turn on our faucet at home? It doesn't make any sense, and they don't even have to be living in the city. And they're not recharging, right. Otherwise, I like your proposal.
And to that also, Gene, we discussed that a little bit more in detail with staff, and their message back to me was that that is something that we need to look at right of way, but there are quite a few pieces of that puzzle that need to be put together. So hopefully, when all of these other policies come back to you all in January, December, January, that's something that's being addressed. It needs to be, for sure.
Okay, good.
Mayor, yeah, just one thing I had to ask the committee, and I haven't been a part of developing this, but on number five, shifting the 200 acre-feet of reservation made for residentially-zoned unwanted tracks, it just seems like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Is this just, this is just a measure to buy time? But should it start to develop, and I realize it's a slow trickle, but the Big Chino Project is going to be huge, it's probably full of litigation, will we bump into that? Is, what does the committee think on that?
To that, and Mr. McConnell, do you, off the top of your head, remember how many building permits were issued last year in the city?
I don't have that figure right.
It was somewhere in the mid-100 range, if I believe. Even if you said that 100 permits a year were coming in, asking for this specific reservation, which is for a specific number of lots, there's 10 years' worth of water prospectively available there. And so, the decision was that this water was set aside as a policy previously. It has had very limited usage going forward, and to reassign it to this area where we have properties that are within the city who do have a process to have a right to water. It's a process to get to that point. We felt that giving that 200 acre-feet was reasonable and appropriate, while reserving 385 feet for property owners who come to the city and say, "I'm ready for my water, it's available to them."
Anyone else, sir? Council, what's the, to make this a policy, what do we need to do?
I think it's pretty clear, my read is that there is a general consensus amongst the council to bring Part One forward next week to vote on as a policy, as a formal council policy. And then part of the policy could also be to staff to start implementing those nine Part Two changes. So it would be, as soon as the 10th, I think, whatever next Tuesday is, that council could vote on adopting this formal policy and then, and then, and then starting on Part Two.
So it could be effective in 30 days?
Could be effective immediately, because it's not a ordinance. So the policy, a policy can go into effect upon its approval.
Resolution.
Or resolu, it could be my resolution or policy, however you want to, we could do a resolution, it goes into effect essentially that next day.
Just one comment, and I do want to thank staff and Charlie and Jim. You know, going back to 2001, on the Water Committee, when we first started it, it was 200 acre-feet per year, and we knew we had a finite amount of water at that time. And when, all of a sudden, we have that fueling up of the economy, 2003, 4, 5, somewhere in that area, we reduced those amounts in fear that we wouldn't have enough water to spread out over the future. So it has always been meant to be flexible, and by doing what we're doing right now with moving it back and forth, I think is a prudent way to manage, you know, your building in the community and also being able to manage your water. So this thing's been working fairly well for about the last 15 years, and this is an extension and a refinement of the current policy that we have, and thank you, Leslie, for being part of it, and Craig, I think it's a very good start.
I'd just have one more clarification, too, by the way, that the policy, even though it goes into effect when it's adopted, could essentially be, for lack of a better term, retroactive till today, so that you don't get a rush to the counter and 700, you know, water applications be put in, you know, between now and next Tuesday. So, but, because it's not, it doesn't have, there's no legal prohibition about saying the policy's going to affect as with the list that's currently on your, on your, on your slide deck here. So that, it kind of prevents anybody, people from coming in in anticipation over the next week and getting in under the wire.
And that would be our proposal, Mayor, is that the date be set as of the last application on this list.
If we agree that this will come forward next week with an effective date already in place?
Well, it's not really an effective date in place.
Well, if we're saying that the last application would be the effective date. Is that what you're?
That's what we discussed at the committee meeting, to the exact concern of, you know, could tomorrow, we get 700 applications for alternative water? That would be, that would not help the situation that we're dealing with. So we need it to be a date certain, and I don't know if there's been additional applications made since this list was created.
We've probably had a couple come through PAC and a couple water service agreements.
And again, there's a difference between an agreement and an application. In other words, and this is a temporary suspension of processing applications, so it could be, I assume that 15114 is effectively the last, the most recent, if you go to...
Sorry, wrong direction.
So 15114 is obviously 2015, number 114, that's presumably the most recent application for water, but that, those applications are simply that, they're applications, they aren't commitments, they aren't contracts, they don't entitle anybody, they don't provide any right, it's simply an application for a water, for water service. So by saying, "We're not going to take any further applications after 114," if there's a couple more, you could add those into the list. If there's a couple more as of today's date, you could add those onto the list as a policy and say, "We're going to suspend taking in applications or processing applications other than what's in, as of today," is perfectly legal.
What about a, an applicant that might have gone before a PAC meeting and received a letter back of the things he would need to do to, for that project to qualify? We're going to consider those as being in the pipeline?
There's, so Table Two are all PAC, people who've gone through PAC but have not submitted a water service application yet. So we're recognizing that their application has been, the processing has begun, if you will, but Page One are people who have submitted a water service application. Two is PACs that would need a water service agreement and ultimately, water from the city. We just are saying that, as of some date... We just are saying that, as of some date, that's it for right now, for the next 90 days while the city sets forward its policy on how we're going to address alternative water requests.
Harman Marlin.
Shoot.
Here again, for the last number of years, worked with both Steve and last year or two with Charlie on this issue. And I wholeheartedly agree with what we're putting a spot to do. I mean, I don't like it, but I was here in 1998, too, and I remember all the preliminary Platts that came into this community on napkins and every other thing. And if, if you don't take a preemptive measure to say, no, we aren't going to tolerate that again, fact of the matter is, this community has been subjected to having to take a different methodology to saying, hey, guys, we just don't have it to give out right now. And I agree with the proposal, as Charlie just read it, and I agree with what we're asking this council to do, and that it be retroactive, and that we move forward so that the community knows exactly where we're at.
Question, Craig. If there was a project underway that would, would fit in the commercial-industrial portfolio, would this apply to them also?
Well, that's, we talked about that at Water Issues. I don't, I don't really, personally, I don't think it needs to fit into this because of what we are proposing to do, excuse me, from a water management standpoint, which is to identify what the course, or what the quantity corresponding to the 1/10 markup really is. Because that 1/10 markup was done explicitly for commercial-industrial, it's got to be a substantial number.
Yeah, okay. So that would cover that. Yeah, okay. Anything else, Council?
Yeah, I just, one clarification, just, I know Charlie's mentioned that this does not have to do with people's projects that were already approved, you know, with 1998 water or Platts. This has to do with new ones. On alternate water.
So you have your marching orders on what we need next week?
Yeah.
Okay. We're done.